All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santee City Council. And it's, gosh, can you believe it? January 10th already, 2024. I called the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present and accounted for. And tonight, the invocation will be given by... Just one second, I want to read this off. Make sure everybody gets their due. Tonight, we extend a warm welcome to Nick Smith from Skyline Church of Lakeside, situated at 9455 Las Coches Road. The church upholds a vibrant tradition in the area, maintaining its ties to Skyline Church in Rancho San Diego. Skyline Church boasts a storied past itself, commencing in 1954 with the establishment of Skyline Wesleyan Methodist Church. Over the years, the church has grown significantly, evolving from a modest structure on Skyline Drive in Lemon Grove to a spacious 2,000-seat auditorium in Rancho San Diego and establishing a Lakeside Church. The Skyline Lakeside Church- I thank you for being here tonight. And when we ask you to step up to pray, we hope you pray for the United States of America, great state of California, Santee, and of course, this council. And tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our new Sheriff's Captain, Aldo Hernandez. So please rise now for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, maker of heaven and earth, we come humbly before you now to ask for-
Dear blessing over our great country, Lord, we do pray for our leaders, that you would open their eyes to your wisdom, guide them in your peace and in your love, and, Lord, inspire them with your hope towards the future. We pray for our beautiful state of California, God. Would you open their eyes, help them to see you, and by following you, to lead us in the right path? And God, we pray for the leaders in this very room. Your word says in James that if anyone lacks wisdom, they should ask God. So we ask now, may your wisdom flow through each and every one in this room, those sitting here right now. Guide them and direct them by your will. May they hear your still, small voice and know which way to go. But may it go beyond this room. Oh, we pray that your wisdom would permeate each and every one of us who calls this great city home. May we be wise in how we speak with one another, interact with each other, and treat the very ground you've given us. Please, Lord, cover us even here, as a hen covers her chicks, and protect our families and children in 2024, as we move forward and strive to make the most of the opportunities you've given us. Thank you most of all for the gift of eternal life that flows by the blood of your Son Jesus, who rose from the dead to prove his power over it. Guide us and protect us, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for you former Marines, hurrah.
I just saw Randy.
Did you?
Where were you?
You know.
Well, our captain just happens to be former Marine, so.
There's no former Marine. Once a Marine, always Marine, you know.
You never talk to my dad. Okay. Well, let me get us back on track here. Well, that computer's going slow tonight. All right then. Well, that's not the right one. There we go. We're on the right track now. Okay. Tonight, we're going to do proclamation. It's a 2024 United States Olympic Team Selection Event for the Marathon Race Walk Mixed Relay and World Athletics Race Walking Tour Silver Label. So come on down, Tracy. Oh, you're behind. I couldn't see you back there. Maybe you walked out on us. No pun intended. Test, one, two. Everybody out there here?
Out there for an old guy.
You're going to have to come down up front first before you make your presentation. Because I'm going to give you this, and you can bring your folks down. Walk this way. You act like this is the first time you've been here. Come on over here. Balance this out. All guys on the left.
Oh, there we go.
You can stay there, Rob. All right. Santee Proclamation. Whereas in 2024, USA Track and Field Marathon Race Walk Mixed Relay Championships and United States Olympic Team Selection Event will take place on January 21, 2024, on Town Center Parkway and Riverview Parkway, adjacent to Santee Trolley Square, with the start-finish line behind the mall. And whereas the city of Santee has shown its commitment to the sport of race walking by having hosted first in 2009, and the last time was last year, in the city of Santee, they were the U.S. Olympic Team Trials and 50K Race Walk. There's a whole bunch of other dates in there, but we don't need to read through all of them. How does that sound? Might be here a while. And whereas the U.S., three U.S. men and three U.S. women finishers of the Race Walk will qualify for the Marathon Race Walk Mixed Relay at the 2024 World Team Championships in Antalya? Antalya? Antalya. And that's in Turkey, on April 21, 24. And up to two U.S. men and two U.S. women may qualify for the Olympic Games in Paris, France, August 1 through 11, 2024. And whereas several of the favorites among the athletes expected to compete have local roots. One and two. And whereas the city of Santee is both thrilled and honored, honored, to host a United States Olympic Team Selection Event for the fourth time. Now therefore, I, John Minto, Mayor of the city of Santee, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Sunday, January 24, 21, 24, pardon me, as United States Olympic Team Selection Event Marathon Race Walk Mixed Relay Day in the city of Santee, and wish all the competing athletes good fortune and Godspeed in the competition. We would also like to recognize the competitors in the United States Olympic Team Selection Event for the Marathon Race Walk Mixed Relay for their accomplishments and contributions to their sport and their country, our country. Special thanks to USA Track and Field, San Diego Imperial Association, U-Nation, and San Diego Gas and Electric, and everything running for organization this event in the city of Santee. Congratulations. And we have an opportunity for you to speak.
Well, thank you very much. That could be a mistake.
Holy Michael, that's longer than my speech.
Actually, in addition, thank you very, very much for this proclamation. It's really cool. You know, I live here in town, and it's been such a delight to host really 14 of these championships and four Olympic Trials since 2009 here in my hometown. But in the end, it's much more important that you hear from some of the athletes and officials that are really affected here. So I wanted to introduce them to you. Willie Banks to your left is not a race walker. From Carlsbad, he's a three-time Olympian, the former world record holder in the triple jump at 58 feet, 11 and 1/2 inches. Now, basically, that's further than that side, that wall, to that wall. He held it for 10 years. And if he'd ever gone to a track meet, he's the inventor of the rhythmic clap before every field event competition in the world. He started that with some drunk people in Stockholm. It's the truth. He's... He went to Oceanside High School and went to UCLA, got an undergraduate and law degree there. He continues to be a world-leading competitor, record-cutting competitor in masters, triple jump and high jump. But he's here as a member of the Board of USA Track and Field and an elected member internationally of World Athletics, which is the international governing body for all track and field, all running events, and race walking.
Thank you so much. It's always scary to have Tracy introduce you. You never know what's going to come out of his mouth. Thank you very much, Tracy. And thank you so much for having the forethought and the foresight to have an event of this stature. And we at World Athletics and at the USA Track and Field are humbled at the fact that a city like this would host this event. And we're so proud to be, well, to be represented by such great people in the city of San Diego. Everybody, of course, wants to come here. And more and more people are learning about Santee. And it's because of your leadership in inviting major competitions like this to your city. So thank you so much from not only us standing here, but the entire international sport field and the sport of track and field. So thank you.
You're welcome. And you know, the bottom line is that anything we can do to help people, especially younger people, to be competitors and to make their mark in life, we're going to do that. You have some more, right?
Now, let's introduce you to the competitors. To my rights, Miranda Melville. She's lived in over Chula Vista for over a decade. Graduated the University of Wisconsin-Parkside two years ago in her debut at 35 kilometers. That's 21.3, 3 and 1/4, 21 and 3/4 miles. She set the American record, winning the championships here in Santee. She's one of America's most decorated walkers ever, a 2016 Olympian, five times member of the U.S. team at the World Championships, the current U.S. champion both indoors and at 35 kilometers, the second fastest U.S. woman ever at 20 kilometers. That's 12.4 miles for you metrically uninclined people, challenged people. She's the American record holder at the indoor 5,000 and 10,000, has been on Team USA 22 times, and has won 18 national championships at different distances. And away from race walking, she's an academic and test prep tutor for kids all over the country, both live and online. Miranda.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you again for hosting this, kind of to echo what they've been saying. I moved out here in 2011. It was the best decision I ever made. I grew up in the ice cold up in upstate New York off of Lake Ontario. I went to school in Wisconsin. Best choice I ever made to move to Southern California. But it's been beautiful here. I've been here, obviously, since 2011. Santee has hosted a race in January, February, every year since I've been here. And I know in large parts, that's to you guys. So I want to thank you as a competitor and as someone who's also watched from the sidelines at times. You guys always help us put on an amazing event. It's so important to everybody competing. It's like, you know, we know we can count on Santee, and that's a huge thing, especially after things with COVID. Things were so kind of tumultuous and iffy at times. We knew we could count on this city to come back and help us through and put on like an excellent race and venue. So thank you very much for doing this.
And last but not least, Nick Christie from neighboring El Cajon. He's the dominant U.S. male race walker at all distances, having won 29 national championships from 1 mile to 50 kilometers, which is 31.1 miles. Doesn't mean he's got brains, but he can go a long way.
They're in his feet.
And he was the only U.S. male race walker on the Tokyo Olympic team in 2021. Two years ago in Dublin, he broke the 35-kilometer American record, which stood for 20 years. He took up race walking after being a California State High School Championship qualifier in the hurdles and the pole vault at Grossmont High School and quickly became a five-time NAIA All-American and 3,000-meter race walk collegiate record holder at Missouri Baptist, local Nick Christie.
Thank you, everybody, for having the event here. Like, it means a lot. And I say this as somebody who, as a kid, would, you know, take the trolley to a dirt stop at the Trolley Square. Seeing how much that's developed is really exciting every time we cross the finish line. And I'm really glad that we get to have this brand-new event here. And I hope that we can set a new American record and put Santee on the record chart with that. So thank you all.
American record holders at this new distance. And will we go on after again on Sunday, the 21st?
So I'm a track and field athlete, San Diego State, back in the 80s. Back in the 80s? Right on. My best friend went to UCLA. So. And Ramona Pegel's a good friend. I know. So I wanted a picture.
I coached at USC.
Yeah. Couldn't get to a good school.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
One great thing about being the mayor is I get to go out to all these events. And last year, I think it was Tracy, got me to go over and hold one sign of the finish line. And I'm like, well, okay. Little did I know who would be finishing the race first and setting records. So it's great because you don't know, but you get to be part of history. And so that's going to be my little takeaway from it. I'm part of history because of you. Thank you, Miranda. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to let you all know, they brought some T-shirts for the council members and staff.
These aren't just T-shirts, guys.
Thank you.
This is the national team uniform. USA Team Swat shirt, T-shirts. They are cool.
Appreciate it.
You have slice medium?
I have mediums, larges, extra-larges. You can blame your staff if you're on the right size. If you call me, we'll send some.
That is nice.
All right. Well, that was fun. And so we're going to the consent calendar, which, or the calendar, including the consent calendar, which includes the CDC Successor Agency Agenda Item. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Ron?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
No, sir.
Sorry.
Councilman?
Vice Mayor and then?
Oh, that's right. I forgot to change. Threw me off, too.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, thank you. Please vote. Hold on.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to non-agenda public comment. Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have two speakers.
Thank you.
First speaker is Lois Meyer. Lois Meyer. Not yet. Oh, there we go. Haven't been behind a microphone since my bluegrass convention up there in Washington State. My name's Lois Meyer. I am a graphic artist. I basically major in all sorts of graphics, signage, and building, building committee and planning. I've worked with Tacoma, Washington's, and Chehalis, and Centralia, doing land development. I can do and take raw land and put buildings on it and give you three-dimensional drawings. And I've been doing that for the last 35 years. Okay, I've been in construction. I got my, started down here with McKeller Industries. If you all knew Corky McMillan and McKeller. So I got my training from that. And I do all sorts of other types of graphics and signage. And my hope is I can get some freelance work with the cities and become active with the cities. And my portfolio is on Facebook, and I have business cards to hand out. And I'll stay after to where I can meet some people and hand the cards out. But thank you for letting me speak. You can bring the cards over here, ma'am. Right over here.
To the end.
The next speaker I have is Robert.
You got it. That's good.
Okay. And he also provided a handout?
Yeah. Oh, and yeah, everybody gets a handout. Last time I was here, hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Last time I was here, I brought you some material on leaded avgas from the state of California. Now it's stepped up a notch, and the EPA has determined that leaded emissions from aircraft engines cause or contribute to air pollution. We kind of already knew that. But now they've made it official, and they're in the process of eventually banning it. So the science, I'm going to quote just a little bit off the page, that stuff that you have, is, "The science is clear. Exposure can lead, cause irreversible and lifelong health effects in children," said EPA Administrator Michael S. Reagan. I just can't emphasize enough, there's counties throughout the state of California that have banned it already. And we're in a valley. El Cajon is the box, and Santee is right next door. And so I just wanted everyone to know that the train is coming down the tracks, and it's also not good for our kids. And we are family-oriented out here in Lakeside. And there's plenty of options that we could do. And I say "we" because I live in Lakeside. And they're expanding the flight patterns because, for whatever reason, I have no idea. But, you know, it's something to consider. You guys should be notified of it. There actually are lawyers that are suing airports and counties where those airports are located because they refuse to get rid of leaded avgas or are not in the, what would you say, the procedure to taking steps to get rid of avgas. And there's a big lawsuit in Colorado over that right now. So again, just, it's basically notification. And just a thought, here we had an Olympic competition here. Wouldn't it great to have a sports village over at Gillespie instead of an airport that burns toxic fuel? Just a thought. And the ball has to start somewhere. It's just not going to happen overnight. So I'm just trying to plant the seed. I'd like the raceway back, personally. But anyways, okay, that's it. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Robert.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. Takes us to item number five, which is new business resolution approving the implementation of a four-month trial to add an additional 12 hours of BLS ambulance service utilizing part-time and emergency medical technicians, the hiring of four additional part-time emergency medical technicians, and approving the appropriation of $43,784 from the Emergency Medical Services Fund reserved to the Emergency Medical Services Division of the City of Santee Fire Department, fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget. Chief?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any speaker slips?
No speakers as of yet for the rest of the meeting, sir.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number six, resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds received for replacement and replanting of trees in the Town Center Landscape Maintenance District.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. The resolution, the item we have before today is a resolution to authorize appropriation of funds received for replacement and replanting of trees in the Town Center Landscape Maintenance District. A little bit of background on this item before we get started. The developer reached out to the city when the developer started work on the reconfiguration plans for the facility, which is now known as Chuck E. Cheese. The developer felt that there were some visibility issues with the business, and as a result, the city authorized the developer to remove four trees. Those four trees were three canary island pines and one iron bark eucalyptus. As a caveat to that, the city asked the developer to contribute a certain amount of funds for the replacement of those trees at a later hour within the Town Center, sorry, within the Town Center Landscape Maintenance District. It's to be noted that there's currently nine of funds in the fiscal year 23-24 budget to cover the cost of replacing the trees. However, we did receive the specified funds from the developer in November. And with that said, city staff has selected the trees for replacement, which are going to be southern live oaks. Staff will obviously work with the businesses in the generalized area on the location of the trees. So with that said, staff recommendation on the table is to authorize the appropriation of $1,385.50 to the Town Center Landscape Maintenance District, fiscal year 23-24 operating budget for replacement of the removed trees.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Please, any comments or questions? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number seven, which is resolution approving an appropriation of an additional $14,187 to the code compliance operating budget for the abatement of a structure at 7953 Rancho Finita Drive.
This one, where I think we're all familiar, is I'll make a motion to approve on this one, too.
Okay. Here, a second. You want to hear it?
I would like, I think, I think it's important for others to hear this one that maybe don't know what's going on. So just for the record to hear this, we don't want anybody ever thinking we're just taking someone's house for nothing, that there's really something going on here.
Thank you. Who's handling it? Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Members of the council, the resolution before you is a request to appropriate additional $14,778 to the code enforcement budget. The abatement of a nuisance at 7952 Rancho Finita. This is a street in aerial view at the current condition of the property. The roof has several openings allowing pests, water, and unauthorized persons to enter the building. The abatement will include removal of all the wood structures to be demolished and removed from the property, all of the dead vegetation and weeds to be cut and removed from the property. And the Keystone Wall, the driveway, and the existing foundation will remain. The anchor bolts will be cut, and everything will be kept safe in that factory. A little bit of background, November 6, 2021, there was a structure fire there. The fire had caused significant damage to the property, making it uninhabitable. February 22, 2022, several attempts were to contact the ownership to remedy by the city. The city declared the property a public nuisance. On July 21, 2023, a notice of intent to abate requesting the owner to repair or demolish was posted and sent to the ownership. On September 13, 2023, staff presented a resolution to the city- On September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, staff presented a resolution to the city council to fund code compliance operating budget with thirty-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars to fund the abatement. On November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, the city advertised a request for informal bids. The informal bid process was completed on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. The lowest qualified bid was forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The bids ranged up to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. The low-qualified bid is under fifty thousand dollars, therefore, the city manager has awarding and signature authority under San T municipal code. Tonight, staff recommends the adoption of the resolution approving an appropriation of additional fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the code compliance operating budget from the general fund reserves to complete this project. Do you have any questions regarding this?
Yeah, just for clarification, so this becomes a lien against the property into perpetuity until it's repaid back to the city of San T, correct?
That's correct. Is this all go through the court systems? Uh, the city attorney's office is overseeing that, that part of it, and yes. Uh, the lien will be there and be refunded to us once the property is liquidated or sold.
Is there, is there a, um, is there any, um, I don't know, what, a rate of return that we get on that over and above? Or just the straight cost?
I mean, there, there'll be some potential interest associated with it, yeah. Um, you know, if, if it is eventually rehabilitated, which we hope it will be.
I'm, I'm sure it will be. Once it's, once it's demolished, somebody's gonna want a piece of land to build on, so. All right, thank you very much. I just, just make it clear to everybody. One, everything was done by the city of San T to try and contact the current owner to get them to remedy it themselves. They didn't do it. It is a public nuisance. It is, it is, um, the rat infestation there. Uh, doesn't, the rats just don't stay in that house, unfortunately. They venture out to the surrounding houses, so it needs to be done. Um, and when the land is eventually sold, that money will come back to the city of San T first and foremost. All right, thank you very much. I'll second the motion.
Thanks. Uh, I'm just gonna say that one of the qualifiers on the dilapidation that you're talking about is, I do go by there quite frequently when I ride my bike. And, uh, over time, I see the progress in the, um, dilapidation, especially after we have some really hard rains, uh, because there, you know, there is a roof, but there's, you know, holes in the roof, obviously left from, uh, when they put out the fire, and it just gets worse and worse. So this is a really good thing for us to do here to help out the, I know the neighbors are very pleased with the idea, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, item number eight. Basically, uh, that's a time for us to, uh, choose a date for, um, where we can be off, and staff and council members have an opportunity to go on vacation. And I'm looking at, uh, August tenth, I believe it was?
July.
July tenth. Just, just kidding back there. July tenth. Laura, comment?
Yeah, yeah, I, I was actually, um, I don't know, there's a unique situation. I, I think it's kinda unique that we have five Wednesdays in July. And it might, it would be a longer break for staff, so staggering schedules if we did the second meeting in July versus the first one. So that's my thought on that.
Okay.
It gives a longer break.
Yeah.
Any, uh, thought on that there, City Manager?
Once your council decides, we will accommodate.
Okay, so then, uh, we will take, there's a one, two, uh, da-da-da, one, two. So you're talking about the July seventh?
July twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay, the, okay, gotcha. The last, the last one.
Yeah, that way you have the next council meeting is not until, like, you have the tenth, we would have one, and then.
Sorry, we should've provided a calendar for you.
You got one right here.
Gotcha.
It's our calendars we gotta look at.
Yeah, it would be August seventh, uh, the fourteenth would be the next one. So, yeah, that is a good, long period of time to work out. All right, then. I, I'm good with that. So we'll do July's, July twenty-fourth.
Can you put that in the form of a motion?
Is that a form of a motion?
Yeah, yes, I.
Second.
Make a motion for July twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Oops, sorry. That's the, that's the wrong one.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Hold on.
Oh. Yeah, let's make sure we get the right one.
Can you vote again, please?
Thank you.
There it goes. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thanks. That takes us to item number nine. You can blame that on James, right?
Yes.
All right. A resolution authorizing the appropriation of grant-matching funds for the purchase of a Pierce International BX Type III fire engine from South Coast Fire Equipment Incorporated through the twenty-twenty-four Wildfire Equipment and Vehicle Grant Program managed by the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. Chief?
Nothing?
Think you're gonna get off easy this time, right?
Seen, seen how this plays out before I get my hopes up.
We're gonna make you go step by step on this one.
Motion, motion approved.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys. Can you show a picture of what it looks like?
Motion carries unanimously.
You're doing the same thing I was.
I did have a question. Where will you store this vehicle? Okay.
Yeah, this vehicle will be at Station Five. And what is, what is probably of, of note is that we likely will not be receiving this even if we order it today for over two years because of production delays. So there will be, there will be room at Station Five, fortunately, by the time that we get it.
Chief, do, would you mind putting up a picture? Thank you.
All right, that takes us, uh, down to non-agenda public comment, and I understand nothing on that one also? No speakers? Okay, great, thank you.
No.
City Council reports. Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Koval?
None for me.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and, uh, I, the only report I have is that I'll be, uh, up in Monterey, um, on the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, I believe. Uh, League of California Cities, uh, New Mayor's and Councilmembers Academy. And, uh, then looking towards, um, February for a board of directors meeting in someplace I've never heard of, up towards Yosemite, so I may not be going to that one. It might be just tough to get to. I don't know why they do that. So that's all I have to report. All right, uh, City, uh, Manager Report.
Just very quickly, I would like to welcome our new sheriff's captain. Uh, this is his first official night. Did great with, uh, a flag salute there, sir, so we appreciate it. And welcome aboard Captain Hernandez. And just a reminder of the Race Walk events, that's gonna be on Sunday, the twenty-first of January.
And, and for the record, the council meetings aren't always like this.
Yeah, we usually have more fun. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, members of the council. I do have a report. But I, well, I was gonna say, I mean, there is a written report, um, if you don't, okay, great. I will do a short presentation of the laws that are affecting, uh, San T in, uh, twenty-twenty-four that were adopted last year. In twenty-twenty-three, there were about two thousand six hundred bills introduced in the legislature. About a thousand of those, give or take, were actually enacted. The governor signed about ninety percent of them, so we have a lot of new laws, um, to deal with. This year, the laws, um, at least as to cities, are less comprehensive and groundbreaking. They're really more very specific and build off previous changes that, uh, the legislature has enacted, primarily in housing, uh, but in other areas as well. Uh, the trend does continue to increase state mandates and decrease local controls. Nothing new there. Uh, begin, it's, it's really more targeted and specific and, and augmenting existing rules. Um, we will work with staff to implement these new laws. There's a lot of work to be done in certain areas. Um, and then if there's new, other information you want on some of these bills, uh, please let me know, or if there's other laws you want more information on, uh, please let me know. All right, next slide. So in the area of housing, there were fifty-plus new bills. Um, a lot of them were related to the legislature's favorite thing to focus on, accessory dwelling units. Um, in, among other things, the one, just one thing to note as a highlight is that, uh, this AB one zero three-three prohibits, uh, any, uh, local, uh, restriction that requires owner occupancy. So, uh, current law, uh, allows cities to prohibit owner, or to require owner occupancies of ADUs, um, after a certain date. But this new law says, no, we don't ever want you to do that. So that, our, our ordinance, uh, will have to be amended, uh, as part of the municipal code update to address this. It's, it's fine now because we have a provision saying if, if state law supersede, it takes place, but we'll clean that up.
I have a question about that one.
Yep.
Um, is there a requirement, or can we make a, a requirement for, um, individual metering then for those properties on the ADUs instead of a sub-meter because there's water loss?
Someone needs to help me, uh, with that, but we do have requirements on, uh, I can't remember on the metering, I think it's metering, but I mean, on parking. Basically, everything that we can do under state law in terms of kind of treating them more as traditional, we do. So I may need to follow up. I don't remember if, if that's specific on the metering or not. But I know, you know, with regard to parking, they have to, have to have separate parking, um, you know, off-street parking as well, so.
Well, I think one of the things that they've been able to do is, uh, ha, use their master meter and then go off of that if the owner owns it. So I would prefer people have their own meters if they're selling.
Let me check into that one. Yeah, well, there, there are, you know, so we can, so there are, no, a law we haven't, I haven't highlighted, but there are, there are, um, you can be more flexible about selling independently, um, but you don't have to do that. We don't, so we don't currently allow that separate sales. You could if you wished to now under current law. Um, so, again, this is just gonna be an area, for whatever reason, they think the housing crisis will be solved by just ADUs, which, I mean, I think there are some, you know, there's some benefit to it, and I think a lot of people, you know, have, have done well with ADUs, but, um, you know, it's a, not gonna solve the real problem. Um, another area where there's a, a lot of new legislation is this concept of streamlining, which is basically forcing local jurisdictions to process development ministerially rather than discretion, you know, with, with some discretion from council. Um, a, a example of this is this SB six eighty-four. Um, and that, uh, for certain projects that meet certain requirements of ten units or fewer in, in certain areas, basically, you will, we will have to process those, um, ministerially. There are some, you know, obj, objectives that you can apply, so it's not without some, you know, guidance. But, uh, again, it's just an attempt to try to force, uh, new housing to, to be developed. Uh, and then that last area, density bonus and affordable housing, there was a number of significant laws. Uh, one that's kind of of interest to San T is SB seven-one-three. Um, and this deals with, uh, what the, the definition of development standards that have to be waived for certain projects are. And notably for us, that, uh, development standards includes standards that have been adopted by initiative. So, um, measure N would be subject to this requirement, just as anything that the council adopted would be as well.
I just have a quick question about, um, SB four as well. So if something could be built at, like it says, at higher education or religious institutions, and it's zoned a certain way here, that what can they zone it to? R seven, R fourteen, R, you know, what?
There are some parameters that I don't remember the details in terms of, you know, what can be on there, but it's, you know, it, that's really designed to, for, it's kind of like a, there's, there's certain areas where that issue is really, really important, like in the Berkeley area, for example. Um, so this is an attempt to sort of prevent or, it, prevent, uh, local jurisdictions from impeding that, or flip side is to allow more development on, on those uses. So I'll get you the details on the actual density that's allowed.
Okay.
Next slide. All right, community services, there are, uh, a host of new, uh, laws. Um, three that are highlighted here at the, the first bullet point really deal with this concept that we're all struggling with about the intersection of homelessness, uh, mental illness, and, um, people with substance abuse disorders. Um, and, you know, there's been an attempt through the care court process to, to try to put in place ways to, um, have people who really can't take care of, of themselves because of their condition, you know, be allowed to get treatment so that they can then move on with their lives, uh, and not just sort of be on the street in a condition of mental health crisis. Um, and so these three bills in different ways try to get to that problem. So for San T, it's not as if we're gonna kind of take advantage of these specifically because they really are driven by, um, you know, either, uh, individuals who have family members who need care or health professionals. Um, but it's certainly something that, as part of our overall, um, effort to confront the challenges of homelessness and the impacts on the community from, from people who are in this condition. It's something we can try to, to leverage and encourage, um, and so we'll keep an eye on that. Um, another one that is, uh, not gonna change immediately, but it's gonna be a big change for your youth sports community, uh, is this AB one-four-six-seven. Um, so this one requires, um, by January one, twenty-twenty-seven, that all youth sports, uh, organizations have an automated external, uh, defibrillator whenever they practice or have games. Um, so, again, it doesn't happen immediately, but it's gonna be a big change. Those things aren't cheap. And, um, we're gonna have to make sure our, you know, our organizations that use our fields are compliant with the law. Um, and I'm sure that there'll be different ways, maybe through some healthcare organizations, and maybe get some grants and, and whatnot, so we can kind of work on that, and I.
And again, does each individual organization have to have it, or could there be one, could we put one there that they have access to?
They, it needs to be present when the practice or the games are occurring, matches are occurring, is what it says. So I think it could be something that for, for each field, it could be, you know, but then each, there's additional requirements for training and things like that, that the, so it will be, uh, will need to be a partnership between the city, the school district, and the youth, um, organizations to make sure that everyone's in compliance.
Just a comment on that. The, uh, Firefighter Association actually does do a program with AEDs. I know we, uh, got one over at, um, Golf Course, and they went out, did the training and everything, and, uh, were able to secure funds for it even.
With that, with that, so there, the city's going to have to mandate to another basic municipality, almost, in the school district, that they have these items per sporting event, and someone there monitor, with it, that is trained on it. So, and we're responsible for the school district having this.
Well, so we'll be responsible for our fields. And again, it's, I mean, ultimately, the responsibility is on the youth, on the organization.
Okay. We're not responsible for policing them.
No, but because, I mean, the concern would be, and what I will work with staff on is, you know, if we're allowing people to use our fields, we need to let them know about this law and make sure that they are compliant with it. So that will be our role is, is to, um, you know, what I'm envisioning is, in, in our permits that we issue to allow people to use the fields, there'll be a provision that they have to comply with this requirement.
I think more to Councilman Hall's question is like, you know, we got so many different fields, or we have obviously multiple fields at one location, but you have multiple teams playing at one time, or the practices like, like you mentioned, too. So, you know, I guess it's like, is there a certain one per capita? You know, one per team, one per, you know, per capita?
My recollection is it's specific to the youth sports, uh, organization, but I, but I think that's where we can work out. I mean, I, I, I would be comfortable eventually where, you know, if you're, if you have multiple organizations using the same complex, but there is a device there and we. organizations using the same complex, but there is a device there, and we always know that there's someone who knows how to use it, that's gonna, I think, will be, will be, um, in compliance. So what, again, we have time, but, you know, it's, it's gonna be a big change.
That is, because now you got youth sports are, that's one more liability that they're gonna have to pay for, which makes it more expensive for...
That's right.
...the kids to be able to participate in youth sports and...
That's right. And, you know, I, and, you know, the bigger organizations, I know from, you know, my son, some, some of his youth sports were very big organizations where this is...
Some not so much.
Some not so much, right? Some, this could be, make a break.
Lacrosse is not, not very big yet, but it's a great...
Exactly.
...athletic sport. Yeah, that's...
So we'll, we'll work with staff on that one. Um, next slide. Lot of sort of trimming at the edges related to municipal governance issues, um, several bills related to elections, um, you know, the clerk, uh, will, will need to be up on those. None of them are really groundbreaking, but they're, they're important. Uh, things like, uh, when there's recounts, uh, how that occurs, updating information between the period of when the election is finished and when the, the final certification occurs, and there's now a requirement that there be weekly updates at a minimum so that people know where the count is coming and, and things like that. So a bunch of, uh, new requirements, uh, that are fairly specific. The one I, when I was doing the dry run, this is, this is actually my favorite bill of the year, uh, because it's like the one that most, makes most sense to me. If you, if this is statewide, but it's, has to do with when you vote on a referendum, and referendum is very confusing to vote on because you're saying, like, am I voting to keep the thing, or am I voting for the referendum, which is to overturn the thing? And so now the requirement is basically keep the law or overturn it. Like, that's, that's what you're gonna be voting on. So finally, there's a little common sense, uh, in, in the law. The HR and, and risk department have a lot of work to do. Um, there's several new bills. Um, one relates to sick leave, uh, which, uh, there's mandates to increase the minimum number of sick leave days, uh, from three to five, and the way that sick leave is accrued. Uh, so there will be some cost impact to the city related to that. I know, um, finance and HR are working on that. Um, there is also, um, some new law related to prior cannabis use in employment decisions and not discriminating against that, uh, which will be something that, uh, HR will have to implement. Um, the legislature loves to require us to do things that they can't do directly necessarily through our business licenses. So there are two new bills, um, that, uh, finance will have to worry about, um, related to applications for business license and, and putting people on notice of certain other requirements. Um, so one relates to, uh, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, uh, requirements and, and, you know, certain options that are available to businesses related to ADA issues. And then, um, another relates to single-use restrooms and identifying them as all-gender restrooms. So we have to now have a separate piece of paper that we hand out when we get an application for a business license or renewal for a license, so we'll have to integrate that into our process. Next slide. A lot of new legislation around public safety, kind of extending the employment, uh, issues. There are, um, two new bills related to workplace safety. Um, one is actually a benefit where, um, this doesn't happen all the time, but from time to time, we have, as the city attorneys, had to go in to get, um, temporary restraining orders when our employees are threatened by people. Um, and the standard is very high for that, and it usually typically requires very specific instances of threatened violence. Um, and so this new bill, SB 428, uh, softens that a bit and gives us better, uh, opportunities to get, uh, TROs even when it's not as specific as it had to be in the past. So that, that's a benefit, um, in that unusual circumstance, but it does happen. And then SB 553, uh, it's another, uh, item that, uh, the HR department is gonna have to be working on pretty quickly, which is, um, a workplace safety plan, which has to be, uh, this, uh, July. So it's coming up quickly. In the area of, of kind of fire and emergency services, uh, several new bills. One of note to an issue that's been, uh, Santee has been working on for a long time, uh, with, with the healthcare providers in the area, is the patient offload standards in times. So, uh, AB 40, uh, requires new standards for that, which should be beneficial, um, and then also audits so that there's additional information so that, uh, that offload time could be tracked. Um, and then, uh, we work a lot with the sheriff's office and private property owners on issues with regard to letters authorizing, uh, people, you know, to, to be cited for trespassing on private property with certain requirements. Uh, and then this new bill, SB 602, extends some of the time periods for those letters, which will be beneficial. So that, that's a good thing. Uh, last slide, next slide? Yeah. Um, okay, so this is, yeah...
Real quick on that. So, and I, I appreciate the letters that go out, but like in the Vaughan Shopping Center, for example, if someone's, for example, trespassing in the parking lot by taking parking stalls and making that their new shelter, is that the responsibility of the business that it's closest to? Is it the responsibility of the shopping center management company to get, to have a letter on file? Is it...
It's the shopping, it's the property owner. So it's the shopping center manager. And, and I know the sheriff does a very good job reaching out to people. For whatever reason, some people are very aggressive about it and really want that help, and some people have resisted, but I think the city manager and the sheriff are always working on that issue. Okay, so the last bill I want to highlight is actually a bill that passed, um, back in 2020. Um, and, you know, some of these bills, like the ones I've talked about already, have effective dates that are out into the future. Um, and so this one, although adopted a while ago, has an important date that's very relevant to your mobile home community. And basically, uh, under current law, long-term leases, uh, for, in the mobile home, uh, mobile home situation, um, those leases are exempt from your rent stabilization process. But this ordinance, uh, or this law, uh, goes into effect at the end of this year, beginning of next year, will remove that exemption. So long-term leases, as of January 1, 2025, will come back in to your rent stabilization system. So we'll be working with staff and the Rent Control Commission because I think there's gonna be a lot of confusion about this issue. Um, I could see people misinterpreting what the law says and thinking like those leases have somehow gone away. That's not what the law says. It basically just says, the exemption that previously applied no longer applies as of this date for rent stabilization. So what it will mean is that those leases that have been kind of just market rate transactions because they're long-term leases, will have to, um, document what the rate is as of January 1, 2025, and then they will be limited by the CPI adjustment in the ordinance as of that date. So it'll be work for staff to just document those conditions, um, but I think the more important thing will be working with the, the commission and the community to make sure everyone understands and applies the law. Um, and so we, again, we've, we've talked to the members of the commission already about this coming up. We're gonna continue to kind of educate them, and hopefully they can get the word out. But I wanted to use this opportunity to raise it with you because it, it could be a potentially big issue, um, going into the next year for a pretty significant amount of your, your citizens. So, uh, next slide. That's it. Um, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, counselor. And so that takes us to, uh, no closed session, therefore, meeting is adjourned.